Hey, you see if you abroad, right? And you missing Trinidad bad and you can't come home for Christmas. I don't know if this is the episode for you, you know? If you're living abroad and you're good, you're comfortably accustomed to your white Christmas and them. And you have your, you have your little supplies coming in, somebody bringing up black cake for you. Or you're making your black cake and thing over there, you alright. But if you're in the cold and you're missing here, this episode could do a thing to you. Memory Lane.
This is just a friendly suggestion to spend Christmas in a recession. Make a new friend for the Christmas this year. You don't need no big set of money to spend a Christmas and be happy. Make a new friend for the Christmas this year. Christmas is a joy that comes from above. Christmas is a time when cold world falls in love. Spread your arms apart, hug and kiss your partner. Say it from your heart, yeah, let's be friends. Let's be friends. Let's be friends this year. You don't need to panic and run wild. All you need is just a charming smile. Make a new friend for the Christmas this year. Come off that frustrating money trip. What you need is warm companionship. Make a new friend for the Christmas this year. Christmas is a joy that comes from above. Christmas is a time when cold world falls in love. Spread your arms apart, hug and kiss your partner. Say it from your heart, let's be friends. Let's be friends. Let's be friends this year.
Hey, welcome to episode seventy-six of the Corey Shepard Podcast. This is our Christmas thing, you know, we've been full Christmas celebration mode from here on in this Christmas we feeling, right? And listen, you remember where to find the podcast on Apple Music, Google Podcasts, wherever you find podcasts, right? And you'll find it on YouTube as well. Thank you for everybody who's been listening. If you're new to this and you ain't subscribed yet, now is a good time to subscribe and hit the notification bell so that you're alerted when we have podcasts. Because coming into this season here, it bout to get sporadic as a man believe in consistency. It could get dark fast, I'm busting out. I'm putting all my business in your road. Right now, I'm in the process of getting PCR test, international vaccine cards. And when my mask, I'm sanitizing because I don't intend for nothing to come back negative to stop me from going where I had to go because I'm out of here. I mean, I liking the idea of being out of here, hold on really later. I liking the idea of being out of here. Well, let me tell you something. You see me on cold weather, we's not friends. And to be honest with all you, it's only after I booked this trip, I realized it could be nine degrees. So it'd be nice to run away for a little while, but in amidst all this running away, I put anything in place, right? Because I also don't want to end up in problems where it are travel requirements and restrictions, I put everything in place so that I ain't get turned back at the airport gate. But the hardest thing to put in place these days is US dollars. So I'm using this platform to appeal to anybody who are US. So here the problem is I run into, right? I hear them talking for a while now about a restriction on your credit card. There's always send the notification saying that your credit card have a restricted amount of US every month. So here what happened to me last week now. A supplier called me and tell me we had a, we had a payment for them, right? I usually pay my credit card with them, right? All the software platform is used. So the guy set up a Zoom and I was really, I would usually pay it over the Zoom with him. So I do the transaction with him and he said, nah, again declined. I said, well, no problem, I'm just call the bank and find what going on, maybe I ain't paid or whatever it is. So when I call the bank, the bank tell me here what going on. You see that transaction, the trend there, it's above your US limit for the month. So I say, alright, I know, I know the limit was there and thing, but I thinking, you know, how come it's above the US limit? Well, they told me, listen, I spend X amount, I spent two thirds of the US that I have available, not going into too much of figures. And the, the payment that I had to make was above that two third amount, right? So it's only, I tell the guy, just call him and I say, listen, we have this US limit thing, so we'll do it on the first of the following month, right? We'll just do first of December. It's only then I realized, wait now, if that's all the US I have remain on my card, is that all I could spend when I travel? Because somehow I thought this US restriction, it just meant online purchases. I don't know why I never really thought, I guess it's because I ain't traveling a while. This thing is for when you travel to the States and you're using your credit card while you're shopping as well. Now, keep in mind that if you pay for flight and pay for hotel, think plenty of us listen to this, it's travelers' families, right? It's two, three of us, some family have five people. If you pay for all the flights on your credit card and let's say you pay for a hotel or Airbnb or something like that, right? And you take a rental. It mean that if you do that at the beginning of November and your trip is at the end of November, you could find yourself in a position where you don't have any US on your credit card at all when you travel. And boy, is it lucky for me because I just so happened to book this flight end of November, we got our next trip to make in December. If them two flights was in December, I in trouble, we, we in some problems. So now I scrambling to get cash all over the place. This is the worst and now credit cards are cancelled. I say, well, listen, I want to get out of debt, I paying off credit card and cancelling them. Now I wish I didn't cancel the credit, well, I shouldn't say that because I glad not to be owing no bank. But I had no turn to this, my main card is Scotiabank. I had to turn to RBC now and you know how much fun it is to deal with RBC, right? The RBC is one of the greatest banks ever created. And I mean, I shouldn't really, but say nothing bad about them, you know, because they are the most friendly and helpful people during this period. Scotiabank just say, your limit is your limit, there's no limit increase or nothing. You, you could increase the card to how much ever TT, this is your US limit every month. I was like, what is this? So I begging, I golden cap in hand and tail between leg, no by RBC to accident, I increase limit, I increase US limit. And I had to get letter from here, letter from there, you know the run ins when you had to apply for a card, right? It's the same thing apparently when you had to do a limit increase, who knew, you know what I mean? So this is my predicament. So now I finding myself having to go for one set of US cash because I mean, there's Thanksgiving, when you, when you check the date I go in next week. It's Thanksgiving by Black Friday, plus I had things to buy when I went anyway. And there's no way with the US limit I have on both cards, I in trouble. So, and you know, I frightened to get too much of cash too because I'm not the most responsible guy. Sometimes I could be a little clumsy and sometimes I go to establishments where it's a little difficult to tell a ones and a tens and a twenty and a hundred from one another. You know that US money is all like the same? Suppose I go to one of my favorite establishments and I decide to throw some ones and some hundreds mixing the, does it for my budget cut again? So I'm a little worried at this point in time because I don't want to be in a position where I running out of cash when I go any people place. And I also want to have vex money when I go in the States too because them is, them is places where me and no Biden go wake up or we go here from Kamala. And where I going kind of close to these people, so any wrong move them make, I want to be able to go on a flight one time. Suppose my credit card, US dollar limit max out and I can't book an emergency flight. Oh God, I get, listen, I talking about this, I get more worried. I can't book a flight and get out to the people place, I don't understand. And the, the bank is casually telling you, no, well, that's your credit card limit, so you have to get cash. So I send them my email now, I say, listen, this is how much cash I want. They's like, nah, you could get about half of that. I was like, what, what, what's happening? Why, why we doing this? Why we making this so difficult? But luckily, Mr., let me talk about Colm Embert a little bit, right? We getting to the thing, I introduced this already, it is episode seventy-six, right? Welcome back, thanks, share with our friends, subscribe to the notification bell and all these nice things, right? So I saw Colm Embert tweet something during my struggles and, and, and trying to figure this out. I don't even want to talk about company issues when it come to US, right? I only talk any personal thing. This is what Embert tweet, this is on the fourteenth of, is this the fourteenth of November or the eleventh or the fourteenth? Fourteenth of November. Embert tweets, "So many phony letters to the editor from fake profiles griping and blaming the government for make believe issues." Latest fake is David Salinger claiming he can't get US dollars for his forty-three-year-old company. However, the real Salinger died in twenty-ten. No such person exists on the voters list. So I suppose he calling out the fake profiles. Now, if you ask me, I personally feel that they have fake profiles. I mean, we know they have fake profiles all over, but when you see the people who do politically charged talks, you figure out who those people are, right? Whether it's politicians or media people or just commentators like myself, right? When you go under their comments, whether they posting something or they doing a live or anything, they have some profiles that repeat a narrative all the time. You ever see them? You see it under the press conferences for COVID too. All they there to do is say something. Now, I am of the firm belief that the opposition have a strategy and they have some, somewhere communicating with everybody to tell them, okay, this is what we attacking them with this week. Because I will come to that, you know, because I see Munilal last week, Munilal say, they lie, they ain't stopping no SOE because it have some kind of loophole with a three fifths on your powers and low. I see him say that last weekend and then this week I lived to see him say, oh, they moving the SOE and it's, it's, look at how much cases high. I was like, what is going on? But anyway, this was Embert's tweet. Now, I agree with him with the fake profile thing, you know, and I don't like it myself and there's clearly a narrative being pushed. So and them fellows had a, what you wanna say, combat? They have to address those things because they can't leave it unaddressed because then it seems as if it's true, right? I understand that. But what I don't like about this tweet is that it, it almost pretending like if we do have a US problem, you know what I mean? So you're tweeting that David Salinger dead, right? Alright, he dead and this person making up. But along with that tweet, you should also say, yes, we know we have a US problem, this is the thing. But I mean, here we article here, let me read from the article, right? Because I, right now, this, this podcast is very, very selfish, you know? I seeking my own interest here, the only reason I talking about this is because I had a travel and I need money, right? So this is from the Express by Ria Tate on the eleventh of November. "The central bank injected one point, well, a billion dollars into the foreign exchange market between January and October twenty-twenty-one." Hold on. Between January and October this year, they injected one, maybe all they should have injected five. Furthermore, the government through the Exem Bank has provided access to further five hundred and twenty-four million, which led to a total intervention of one point five billion on the foreign exchange market for the first ten months of this year. Embert was responding to a question from MRO MP Roshan Parry in the House of Representatives on the measures taken to rectify the foreign exchange shortage in time for the upcoming peak commercial period. Embert said, "The government monitors the foreign exchange markets on a regular basis and takes appropriate action as when required." In the, in this context, three new special purpose windows for foreign exchange have been established by the government in recent years. In the first instance, a window has been made available at the central bank for state enterprises to meet some of the Forex demands to ensure supply of essential goods and services." This article getting good at any point? You know, two hundred more foreign, Exem Bank, their last three facilities are targeted outside you. I just not really saying nothing, no. Ria Tate writes a good article and everything behind, seeing where it helping. Embert says, "This intervention enabled authorized dealers to, to meet demand as foreign currency sales by authorized dealers to the public rose by six point five percent to three point something million over January to October." Listen, none of this, none of this article in saying how I gonna get a couple of grand before I get out of here. So they making these statements like, you know, you're tweeting that a dead man tweeting this and things, so it's not true, but dude, it's true. All of us facing the same issue. So if I, let me say my subscriptions on one credit card, if all those subscriptions go through in that month, I have whatever my subscriptions are minus that to be able to spend when I travel. I find that to be worrying, if nobody find it worrying and it's just me telling man. But I'm more worried about it, any, I'm more worried in the case of emergency than anything else. Let me say something happened to you when you travel and you spend out, you know, we's Trinidad, we like to spend a while when you see Thanksgiving and sale and when we see big TV money going and spending. So what happens if something happened to me out there? And then my credit card ain't good enough to cover whatever medical charges and then gratefully, I had my sister, so I just, if she listening to this, she's going to cover all my medical expenses until further notice, should anything go wrong over there. But the reality is that if you're not, most of the times I travel, I not staying by somebody. And I flashback to the last time I think I traveled with my family was twenty-eighteen. And I did not check any of these restrictions, how much US I had available on my card or anything. I paying my credit card as if I have the whole US balance available. And we stay in a pretty nice Airbnb by nice, I mean, a nice piece of money jump out. We buy, we booked the flight last minute because the only reason I rarely travels because my passport was gonna expire and I felt like we're to take me some time, so we just run on a trip impromptu. And then we, well, certain people shopped a lot, you know what I mean? A lot of, there was a lot of Walmarts and a lot of Dolphin malls and a lot of Sawgrass mills. So I thinking back to that and I saying, but wait now, I doing all this and we going to restaurants, we Ubering, we doing all. I could have been in a situation where we gone somewhere and I care Uber to reach back the Airbnb. This is a little scary, so I'm not sure what the plan is where it is concerned, but if you inject one point five million, billion so far come, it ain't enough. It's enough and I don't know why the plan because more and more you hearing, uh, the oil and gas business done, you know what I mean? They, they, they come out in, in, in big and they say, that is it, Atlantic LNG or whoever train that dead, it's, it's nothing else to do. So that, that fade into black and it, it makes you wonder like, what is our source of earning foreign exchange now? Because we ain't no carnival, well, I guess they say carnival next year August, right? But we ain't no, the regular carnival is not what it was. So we, we, when you see our relate, I say, you don't need no big set of money, you know what I mean? To have a, when it's Christmas in a recession or not, that song real relevant to what we gonna go through this year, you know? I ain't know if we sure. So what, the whole point of that song is, make a new friend. We, it could be a little battle this Christmas here. Now we come together and help one another through this Christmas season, you know? We used to eat by this one Christmas day, we play this one boxing day, so we not to cook every day and thing. It looking like one of them Christmases until we go back to some level of normalcy in terms of COVID, we in some trouble. But I also hear, I also hear, and I seriously considering our white Christmas and a long time I ain't spend our white Christmas. But I had to figure out how I dealing with this nine degrees first. If I could figure out the nine degrees, I willing to ride back out for Christmas. Luckily, November and December is two different months and I will get a refresh, a reset in my US balance. And it's anybody who listening to this from RBC, talk to all the credit card people and tell them treatment nice now, I can't, I can't, I can't be going broken, I can't rule broken, you know what I mean? But I remember like, I remember one time going to, as we talking, nine degrees. I had a little conference thing, boy, going to Bogota, I think I was living in Kingston them time, right? So I booked my flight through to Bogota and thinking, I don't know why in my mind, I never checked the temperature where I going. In my very simple mind, Columbia warm, that look like Caribbean to me, you know what I mean? When I, when, anything I see with Columbia or Colombians, it's hot. So me and study in cold weather or nothing, right? So I pack my normal clothes like if I in Kingston and I going up the road, I fly to Miami first, I do my little shopping and then I jump on the flight to Bogota, you know, miss the flight too, but I next story. I jump on the flight to Bogota and them days I doing my Rosetta Stone heavy, you remember Rosetta Stone? I listening to that all the time and I never feel like it was helping me learn any Spanish whatsoever. Must be my inconsistency with it, but I listening to it every day and thing and I, you know what I mean, I, I coming up. So I sit down on this flight, you know what I mean, I listening to my music, listening to the audiobook, the flight going good and them kind of thing, you know what I mean? And boy, listen, I get a shock of my life, you know, close to landing, when you about a, a hour out, forty-five minutes out or whatsoever. They's tell you, okay, well, we looking to start our descent into wherever, straighten up your seat, buckle your seatbelt, extinguish all cigarettes, you remember that? And then they start our announce now what happening in Bogota, but this whole announcement happening in Spanish, right? So I underestimated Rosetta Stone all this time because I listening to this thing in Spanish and I understanding to the point where I'm not paying attention to the fact that they saying it in another language. I just know they say extinguisher to cigaretteo, rileen up your sito or whatever the hell, I ain't listened to the Rosetta Stone in a while, right? But whatever they say, I was understanding it as they go along, right? And then something in my mind say, but wait, what, what, what you say there, it could be ten degrees? Can I hear them talk the Fahrenheit and the Celsius, I say, I say it's ten degrees, you say it could be. Boy, then they start over the same announcements in English and that man say, when we land in the airport is going to be ten degrees. Listen, I have on a, a, a jeans, a regular jeans, no, no lining or nothing like that, no boots, I have on my normal sneakers or loafers or whatever, I don't even wear socks, so I have on no socks. And a polo jersey, I ain't even have on a jersey under the polo, a vest, it's just the polo. I tell you, I dressing like if I in Kingston and that man say ten degrees, boy, here now, a sour like lime because my whole suitcase looking like exactly what I have on. And remember, this is a business conference, I not paying for myself to be there, somebody pay for me to be there. I done miss the flight coming in already, it's a two-day conference, eh? So I missed the first day, so I shame and I cold. So now I had to act like I ain't cold in the cold because, boy, when I come out of airport and that cold breeze hit me, I say, no lord, this, this not right. I, I want to, I want to drink them and tell them I'm missing, I'm missing next flight too, I just go back where I come from. And I go on in this, um, conference something and then when lunchtime reach and I walk in all the building now, I, I, I just sell it now, eh? I had to act like if I warm. As I walk on the already place, as we walking out the building, she says, it's cold out there, you know, you don't wanna get your jacket? I was like, nah, 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 this is good weather for me, man, I like this weather. Boy, you know, as that door open, everywhere is called it goosebump, goosepimple, cold pump, wherever it's called, every one of them thing rise up. I say, oh god, they say right. It's the most amount of coffee and soup. She say, oh, you're having soup, you're not having lunch? I said, nah, you're hungry this time, it's cold, I tried to warm myself up from the inside. And boy, listen, I saw, I don't know, and that, them days as a young fellow in your age now, I ain't know if I could take that cold little. And here what happened to me too, eh? We staying in a nice little restaurant, uh, hotel, you know, if it's not, I hired, it was a nice place, I can't remember the name of the rest, the hotel. But here what happened to me now, I go in the people hotel, this is, no, remember that I playing warm holdy, right? I don't want to keep my hand in my pocket too long, I don't, I wanna act like if I accustomed to this kind of weather and I good to go, you understand? Boy, I reach back in the hotel and that cold, here now, feeling so cold when I open that door and close it back like inside the room cold. I just switch off the air conditioner, bam, you know, that means hotels have a whole central thing, so when you, when you hit it, you just hear the whole thing shut down like. And when I feel that air come off in that room, I say, perfect. And I go on under the, 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 the sheet, you know, there's some nice thick sheet in them hotel, no good hotel, and I drop asleep. Brother, after about an hour, I wake up, everything chatter, you know, it's the heat I take off. When you see, when you see a lack of knowledge is a hell of a thing, when you see it's a simple term, me realize it's the heat I take off. I just thinking that that button in that thing where you know the little panel on your wall? In my mind, I air conditioning, I switch that thing clean off. Listen, the whole hotel is glass, just like we hired here. And when I watch the glass, the whole thing frost up, I can't see outside, I find like I seeing, you know, when you go in the winter, winter, when you breathe out, you see it miss, that is what my room looking like. I had to switch back on that heat, go down in the lobby, play like I doing thing. It's heavy coffee and soup, I guess must be one o'clock in the morning, I sour like lime, so, Ole, say Ole, pray for me. Pray for me. I go in, I go in and face the cold again and I gonna survive this thing, I'm gonna go with all the clothes I have, I put all my clothes in my suitcase and I put it on all the same time, if they will catch me with this. And if it is, if it is, I survive this at ten degrees, what, what, what do winters be like in New York? That is when you is getting to zero and thing. Because if I could survive ten, how close ten is to zero in terms of weather, like how it's feel? Because as a little child going New York for Christmas, I remember seeing, um, you know, when your nose running and people had to tell you it running, you don't know, that is, that is what we facing at zero? I need to know because I could do it a little white Christmas. But in, in terms of the music for this episode, let me talk about that real quick, right? Last week I played some music and I closed the episode with one of my, a, a Parang song I like from Mr. Shaq named Parang Joy, right? Go back to that and listen to the end, right? And I see Mr. Shaq reposted and thanks, salute to Mr. Shaq and somebody in the comments say, what this is? This Kai So or Soka Parang or where exactly this is? That's a good question, you know, because when you listen to Mr. Shaq and who, I mean, hopefully next episode, whenever that is. I want to play some of these songs like, uh, I have one song in, in, in particular from Eddie Charles. You don't wanna hear on the piggy. They do song, like in terms of the ways song, it's, it's, I know, um, it don't have a feel like a Soka Parang. It's another sort of quatraine it on the normal, like how he is play a Parang and that's how that joy, uh, spread joy song was, uh, Christmas joy. And, um, it's kind of leave you asking, what is this really a Christmas song, a Kai So, a Soka? But I, I like how Shaq responded, Shaq say, listen, everything I do is Kai So. So even though you saying Soka Parang, the person who say Kai So, right? The guy that's called as Kai Soka Parang. Salute to crazy and everybody who is the Soka Parang king, Baron, Scruncher, salute to all the Soka Parang men, Myron B, my guy Keegs, everybody who, their zone is Soka Parang, right? Salute and salute to all Parandero as well, who play Parang over the years, salute to all of them. Nine taking nothing away from nobody very respectfully. But the idea of Christmas songs as Kai So really come out from a marketing tactic, eh? So when you listen to some of the Calypsonians from back in the day, from Melody and Sparrow and them time and Rose and coming through the years. A part of why the men start singing Christmas songs was a marketing tactic so to get the album into the radio stations earlier. Remember if you gonna submit songs, you're gonna do a, like you say, like you say, you have six songs to, to playing for the carnival. What they used to do is put one of these songs on one of the sides of the record, they used to make it a Christmas song. What they might do a forty-five and do the, the Kai So offering on one side and the Christmas offering on the next side. So instead of carrying it in quite January, February or it's a late carnival, it's March, what they do is they drop off the album and thing in, in the thing in November with a little Christmas song on the album. So that their songs start to play for Christmas now because DJs looking for content for the Christmas, right? But when you start to play the songs for the thing now, you have a better chance again, your Kai So play earlier. So you might find that a man releasing a calypso and it's starting to get airplay from November, December because them days, you remember record is, is, is three, three record, uh, album, for instance, might be three or four songs on either side, that kind of thing though. So once you submit it and you say, well, alright, Parang or Christmas music, not Parang, right? A Christmas Kai So, as Shaq say, a Kai Soka Parang. Once that's on your record and they play that, they will listen to whatever else there and if, if, if Jean and Dina is on the next side, well, the DJ go jam that too. Once, once Christmas clear, I don't know if it back then, it used to be Boxing Day Soka coming on or Asha Moore Soka used to play or Calypso, used to play closer or before Christmas and things. So men go jam that too, so your song getting more airplay over the time. So when you go to drop off a song and the radio, the radio announcer, you have your big song on the next side, they drop off something like this for him. Tell me if you know the voice now.
Christmas time is the time forgiven, we learn that from since we small. But from year to year is the same old thing, Santa's coming to call, we always ignore it or forget it. This we know is true, so this coming Christmas, let's all make an effort, get a present for Santa too. Let's trade in the old sleigh and the reindeer for a big car with a chauffeur, get a helicopter. Because everybody love their own Santa Claus.
You know the voice, boy? You supposed to know this voice if you're listening to this podcast, right? Listen lyrics and Kai So, no?
Christmas is here and we all having fun, Santa brought presents for everyone. But he had to squeeze through a chimney for the colors. What a horrible place to pass, why not open me a window or your front door? So Santa could bring his gifts, I find that climbing on the rooftop and coming through a chimney is a hole that a stupidness. Move him from the North Pole because it's so cold, give him an apartment with modern equipment and made a butler. He deserved, let us show our love to their Santa Claus. Everybody drinking beer whiskey and rum, post and tie getting on. And his jingle bells jingle as they roll, Santa goes wearing the same old clothes. We should be ashamed, we should be blamed to treat Santa Claus like a brute. So let's chip in some dollars, take him to the tailor for a new continental suit. Take him out to a nightclub or a movie, get some fine chicks and give a party. It's time to chip in and do our share to make sure he comes more than once a year.
Kai So, Kai So, you see, so the Kai So really come out, men promoting the song, men making sure that the inside for the season. When you start to get airplay from, from as early as November, your, your song is a hit. So a man like, I ain't telling no, who sing that song, yeah? Leaving that open for people to guess again because by now you're supposed to know that voice. Because by now you're supposed to know that voice, one of my favorite calypsonians of all time, one of the great legendary, right? If you don't know, if you don't, if you don't know the name too good, they call him Papa, right? But when he put something like that and he put on the next side, a song like my lover, so I ain't saying that's what was on it eh, but when he put them two songs together now. You can't refuse it, you can't deny it, so that by the time Christmas, um carnival time coming. And they play the Christmas song and they play my lover, everybody done sweet on that song time carnival time, it's a great marketing strategy if you ask me, so. When you talk about, I know crazy is the king, uh say they invent soca parang and thing, right, that's good, and I think it's true, you know what I mean, because the, the, the blending. When you listen to that song, that not really making an effort to blend parang with the music in the same way that people like crazy and them would do late in the game eh. My memory failing now, but somebody had done something like that, closer to a kai so parang before, uh soca parang before crazy, but salute to all of them involved. And yeah, matter of fact, this episode, I would take a walk down memory lane and play some of them songs that would be aside B. To, to popular kai so or calypso. And it was used at our marketing point to get them in the radio stations early, nice little tidbit, right? Now, last week is a special week to me, it's where I want to salute my guy Zachary, all this you mean in last episode, you see how much energy the man have? I, 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 I just work this house on a reward based system, right, I'm not gonna say work this house now, I just work him. I ever put in a reward based system for certain people are in trouble, right? But I try a reward based system, so he's a man I like to come on the podcast, especially the music part, he wants to come and it's time to play music. And he want to play a ruddy rich hair bad eh, but we fighting against that a hundred, total nail we fighting against that, it, it thing won't happen. I, I not playing no six nine, no ruddy rich, wherever is the people who he's listened to, none of it. But my guy is in his first communion class and. I guess as part of the first communion, they call them to do now, I, I don't have to tell you who put him in first communion class, right, I can, I can leave that open. Only, only want to take our guess as to whether it's me or Stacy put him in first communion. So, so he in the first communion class and the people call for them to do a reading in church, right? So these little boys had to go up during mass, you know, Sunday mass in the cathedral. My boy had to go up and do a reading, I want to salute to my boy Zach, the boy do a great job, I went to church, only upon my, my Dan Dan. And my fru fru, I went to church and I didn't burn. I did not burn, I was okay in the church, you know what I mean? I think it was Father Soju do the mass and it was in the cathedral, I haven't been to the cathedral, I feel I never went inside a cathedral, to be honest. I feel like I only see the cathedral yard, because when I went, you know, I was a little surprised that, well. Not that it's small, but I guess because of COVID, they take away a lot of the pews or the combined pews to create social distance, so you're kinda far from the people in front and behind you. Off to the sides, if you know a Catholic church, most of them designed the same, boys call it the middle, the aisle, the, the lane, the middle lane. The chairs, the, the pews where they are, go and try and use church language, right, the pews were there, but they put them together so that people separated front to back, well, you just understand what I'm saying, right? And then on the outside had no pews, boys call out the flanks. Or the people who not so much into the church, or boys call out the purgatory, I ain't so sure, but on the purgatory side, or the, the outside of the flanks. All they had was chairs, like little office chairs, so people was kinda separate, you know what I mean, everybody wasn't very close together and they make this separation and. Well, it's the first time I go to church since COVID starts, so don't laugh if you are accustomed going to church, right, but. When the peace thing start, boy, going to shake people, I forget the damn COVID thing, I just look forward to the shaking, I don't know. The, the reason I used to like them church, again, it come down to the music, you know, because. The whole church service used to be boring to me, I don't wanna hear about who fought and when fought and who came forth and all these kinda things, right? I really wanna hear a lot, I wanna hear your sort of reading and them kinda thing, I used to look forward to the little songs. But the songs in the small church or the born again church used to be more vibesy than in the Catholic church or the Anglican church, well, don't talk for the Anglican church. The songs in the Anglican church is something like this. Hold, I want to sleep, I vex like hell my grandma. It drawn out and it boring and not, no kinda vibesiness, not happen man at all, I ain't like it. And then the Catholic church had a little better bong state eh, because it, 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 they used to, you know, you know what they used to do in the Catholic church in fairness to them? Like it has songs in the church where you have to hear. Oh great Lord. Oh great Lord, you know them songs? But the Catholic church now, we used to have a little guitar man and at least a little trap man and things, so. They used to say. But you know, I didn't know a damn lyric, you know, but that is how they used to sing it back in the Catholic church a little bit. But why you so like this small church too, cause when it come to the greeting song, it used to be a little vibes on them days in the church, right? It's a certain birds, honey, want to shake, you know what I mean, and hug up on these things when they greeting song, so that is what, that was to make me excited, but. And they used to play a song like this, you remember this? Why don't you greet somebody in Jesus' name? Why don't you tell them that you love them in Jesus' name? Why wouldn't you greet somebody in Jesus' name? Everybody smile, Jesus loves you, everybody smile, Jesus loves you. You remember that, it's, and listen, if, 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 if you wasn't in the church, right? If you wasn't in the church and when they singing them songs, you shaking a hand and nobody, you have a little bongs in your chip, everybody smile. You had to do just enough, um. You had to do just enough for the elders in the church and them not to come after, but anyway, I know how it is so fine. I reached the greeting part, it's almost to show a sign of peace. And I offering handshake and thing, but people, people like they in shock, they know me ain't go to church, cause trying to act like I is be in church, like, you know, like I is go at different church now. But it's a kinda bow now, you had to just take a little bow, you just see people and you bow on you, I, I just see most awkward things, COVID thing, time for this thing to done, but anyway. My guy Zachary do a great job along with his cousin Jalani and all the other children who were in first communion. The men went up there, it's amazing to see how them at nine years old could go up on a podium in front of church, read a long, long verse. And they're not nervous, if it's me, my voice cracking, I, I can't sleep the night before, I just be nervous to talk in front of people, you know, so. Salute to them for going up there and doing that, and salute to all the teachers in the first communion class too for. You know, drilling them and helping them to get prepared and, I mean, salute to Father Soju too, I like how he talking, because he tried to say, you know. Parents of the first communion children, he make we stand up and all these things, he bring us in front of church for our blessing. But the blessing is really to pray that some of these people come back to church, because I think he see it in my eyes. I watch him here, I make fun, I think he see it in my eyes and I saw the disappointment in his eyes, I was telling him I'm not coming back. No point in time, but I want to say, right, in fairness to the church and everything, right, well, no Father Gregory, he's my boy, so anything he had to say, I listening to. But you see, what is he probably, uh, uh, Archbishop. I know he have a name, like he sung like he working for county council, right, what is his name, is Jason Gordon. Well, let me Google it thing, I because I'm pretty sure I gonna say the wrong thing. And I don't want to come across, Jason Gordon, I don't want to be disrespectful, you see Archbishop Jason Gordon. I am not the most religious man that have, I've been every religion they have, because every religion. There's fast for a little while and then overdo the eating like if they never eat before in life, all religions have, when they break fast, there's brak while. So I always like religion growing up in St James and thing, wherever religion it is, all of we as little boys was that religion for a little while, right? But I like to hear Jason Gordon talk, I find he real, and when he doing his way, it's called at a sermon. Every time he doing his sermon and thing, he's a man you had to listen to, he, he always talking real things. And he, he's make some points where, and you know, I, I really come across him. Because a day, I must, I went and exercise and whatever, and I have my headphones on, so I listening to, must see some slackness on my headphones. But in between, I guess the music was low, or maybe my music was off and I was hearing the TV, because Stacy's do a mass thing every Sunday morning, right, watching it on TV. And I listening to a man talking about forgiveness and how we forgive conditionally and all these types of things and. Listen, I, number one, I was kinda surprised that, um, Stacy was listening to that, because forgiveness is a strong suit, you know what I mean, but. The thing is, when I listen to what he's saying, I say, but this man sung in real real, I like what he's saying, and I was shocked to turn around and see that is church. I really turned around to see like, who, I says, Stacy, you listening to this, who is this? And it's then she tell me this is Jason Gordon, who is the Archbishop, and listen, he's a, salute to him. If ever you're listening, I don't know if he's listening or he's go to church or whatever all he is do. But if you get time, whatever religion you might be and you get time to listen to Jason Gordon, he's a boss, he ain't bound to be of no religion. And it's not like a, he not preaching like somebody who trying to convert you into something or make you believe anything. He just talking his mind, so when I saw him in the papers this week, uh, uh, funny, it was interesting, they said religious leaders say notes another lockdown. This is from the Guardian by Richard Khan, right? COVID nineteen cases continue to rise at an alarming rate with yesterday's confirmation of five hundred and nine new infections. The country's seven day rolling average now stands at four hundred and eleven cases per day. And, I mean, they write this article a couple of days ago, so now it's even higher, because we seeing where. We had five, six something a day and people reacting to it, right, that all of us a little more worried, you know, when the cases rise like that. We should be doing it before, right, but you know, it's human nature, we get a little more complacent, so now that they rising, we getting worried again. So it goes on to say, however, despite the last spike in cases, Roman Catholic Archbishop Jason Gordon says he will not support another national lockdown unless it's the last result. Speaking on I ninety-five point five, the Archbishop echoed the sentiment already shared in many quarters of the country, including the government, that another lockdown will be damaging to the country. Quote, lockdown would be a last resort if it really goes to a serious crisis stage. It's because when you're locked down, you're killing one part of the patient, which is the economy. For me, the patient is the whole society, it's not just the person who has COVID. It's the whole of the society you have to treat as your patient. You have to start balancing very carefully between treatment of one ailment that's creating another ailment that is going to be long term and have dire consequences. He added, the children having no socialization, that is another ailment in the society, we have begun to understand the long term, the long tail of COVID. Did I read that right? The children having no socialization, that's another ailment in this society. We haven't begun to understand the long tail of COVID. When the fourteen, fifteen and sixteen year olds have opted out of school and have gone wild right now. When we have to deal with them as young adults now and in time to come, that's the long tail of COVID. So locking down really has big consequences for the patient, I. I tell you, this man is a boss, and I don't know where he learned to put together stories and just the way he say things and put them together, I hope I get to talk to him one day, but. It's amazing how rational he is, and maybe it make me question, like, did I find religious leaders to be irrational back in the day, and maybe I did, you know what I mean, but he went on to say. Or the article went on to say, earlier this week, several business leaders also voiced concern about the rise in COVID nineteen cases and feared another lockdown would be considered. However, the heads of several chambers has said because the country, had said the country and the business, the country and businesses cannot afford or survive another lockdown. Describing the increase as a matter of grave cons- or great concern, Archbishop Gordon said that he believed it was due to lack of discipline among the population. He said it really speaks to, it really speaks against the indiscipline in our place, we know that COVID nineteen is rife. We know that it's a serious matter and we know what causes it, and we seem not to understand that discipline is required in this time like we've never had before. We also know that the people who are dying are the unvaccinated, ninety-nine percent of those dying in Trinidad are unvaccinated. We know the facts, but it's as if we can't face this, uh, and come to the discipline that is required. In the meantime, the Archbishop said he believes stricter measures can be used along with an increasing, an increased education campaign. He said, what I would support is stricter measures and much more education of our population. One more time, of what is required when we going to live with COVID nineteen and not lock down the society. Simple but effective, that is, if I had to describe the way he speaks and he talks about this on every topic eh. When you hear him talk about relig- about his religious matters or it's, it's to do with the society or how we behave as people, any issue, and to me, the more contentious the issue. The better he is to listen to, because he's just a pragmatic, very balanced guy, I really enjoy listening to him a lot, and I agree with him a hundred percent, I don't know how you all feeling about this, but. The cases going up past five hundred and six hundred, they scary. But it calls for us to, even if we don't wait on the government, as he suggesting to reeducate us or start back with a campaign. It's almost like we have to reeducate and redis discipline ourselves, because it's easy to get complacent when the numbers lower, you're not feeling like it's an issue. Or there's proof everywhere in the world that after certain part of the population get vaccinated, we get very, very, very complacent. And we had to remember that we have people in the society who unvaccinated, right, now, let me talk about this for a minute. I, I spoke about this thing with Nisha guy last week, and after I spoke about it, I saw the, um. I saw that they went and take a bunch of Facebook posts that she made. Basically saying she fed up of the vaccination talk and all who want to go and take their poison, want to take their poison, I paraphrasing, right, but we want to take your poison, leave us alone and vaxxed and don't care and. Boy, listen, the internet written in ink, yes, and it will never be defeated, so people pull up the screenshots of that, to basically say how you feeling now, well. I will be honest, and I would love to hear how she's feeling now, I didn't see anything, I know that she had started a GoFundMe. And I think, I mean, as people, we had to have compassion, right, I mean, the girl is a performer. You could say what you want about her stance on vaccines and whether she's smart or she make a stupid choice or whatever she do, right, that in the past already. Gratefully, she get COVID and survived, that is a salute to her. For fighting through this thing and battling through, and of course, condolences to everybody who lost someone and rest in peace to, 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 to the people who would have passed with this dreaded virus, but. I glad for her she get through, even though you didn't take the vaccine and thing, you, 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 you pushed through. But I would love to hear from her now, what's her stance on being vaccinated? Or being part of the, not just being unvaccinated, I know, but being a part of a unvaccinated tribe. That thinks that people who telling you, encouraging you to get vaccinated, you think that they being selfish or they trying to poison you or that you will die within five years and all these types of other narratives that going on, I wonder how she feels about it now. But the thing is that she put out a, a plea really as an artist, because she's a performer and of course, you're not able to perform for a long time, so it looked like she was trying to raise funds for it, so. I would encourage anybody to go and find her GoFundMe and thing and help, you know, I mean, people need help. Here was, you know, related to see, related to basically says a recession Christmas buckle down, I know where he is saying that, but it's so relevant for, for, for this season we gonna face here. And they make a friend, make a friend, when he say make a friend, he ain't talking about check your friend, you know, he say make a new friend, that means somebody who's a stranger. Make that person into a friend, man, you know what I mean, le- le- let us be a Christmas where we. Go back to the regular traditions that we had as cr- as children growing up during Christmas, where it was about, it wasn't about the gifts. Because this trend now, ones are gift from auntie and uncle and mommy had to give a different gift and daddy have a gift and Santa Claus have a different gift and all these kinda things. Me and, I, I told Zachary the other day, I said, brother, here what going on? See, I said, that's Santa Claus thing that they really know, the mother was vexed with me. But Zachary was real disappointed, Zachary says, so you just was lying to me all this time, I says, your mother, I don't encourage Santa Claus thing. Be, and I, I can't remember why I say, because he, he, he wanted some kind of iPad Pro. When I check this thing, this thing is a thousand US. And I don't know if it's just the annoyance of, of, of having to, I said, boy, it's not a Santa, no, I think what had happened was, he wanted the iPad Pro. So he come in to tell me what he want from us for Christmas, and he know we wouldn't give him it, because we don't have the money and we will say we don't have money, but he asking Santa. For iPad Pro and he being nice and thing, I say, it's not a Santa Claus, no, that is mother money, that man was so disappointed. Like he went and sleep with that thing on his mind, boy, he wake up the next morning and he come out and say, um, mommy. Sorry for stealing your twenty dollars, boy, I had a, again, I pressure now, I say, but this man is stealing money, I says, Zachary, what twenty dollars you steal from your mother? Yeah, well, if it's not a Santa Claus, that mean the tooth fairy realized that twenty dollars was mommy money. I wanted dead, but I glad he know, the man was vexed, the man says, well, he just lying to me, I was just making up stories and tell me, I say, I pull him one side of the day, I says, Zachary, let me, let me ask you something in truth. I say, a part of you didn't know that it have no big fat white man coming in here to bring no gift for you. He say, well, to be truthful, I really tell myself it probably don't have a Santa Claus and it's, that is all you point on, I think, and when I telling you about Santa Claus, remember that we black eh? But Stacy who do eat sweet thing, this girl does not eat chocolate and all them sweet thing and thing. She is biting a cookie and leaving a glass of milk every Christmas morning, I so blasted vex. When I parang it and thing and I come back here hungry in the night, I can't eat them cookie and drink that milk, you know, she, she eating a cookie and drinking off some of the milk. To make sure that when he wake up, he feel this big fat white man come in the house and bring gift for he, so. This trend might be smarter than me thinking of, but he not falling for that whole thing at all. But the materialistic part of Christmas is what I'm talking about, we could stray away from and in a Christmas where the budget's tight. When since, when he was growing up, you use, how much gift you used to get for Christmas? If you get gift at all and you grow up, you grow up celebrating Christmas, a lot of times it's one gift. And you know the gifts I remember the most, I remember I got a footballer, yeah, I will never forget her, and it was wrapped, like when I see it and they bring it for me. I know it's a ball already because of the wrapper, just started bouncing once, I was so happy. That couldn't cost no thousand US, or if you grew up in St James, you know, you had to get a bike from Chatterbox or you ask for it. One of them places you get a nice little bicycle, now when you had to buy a bicycle for Zachary. Is by Mike's and by Gene Samuel and by M C E and these bike places. Is by Mike's and by Gene Samuel and by M C E and these bike places, it's five thousand. Like what going on? When we get so materialistic and we pass on that materialism to our children and all that, it's nice, I think it's. I would say this, it's a blessing to be able to afford nice things for these children so that I could see their reaction Christmas morning, that priceless. But in a Christmas with things tight, it have some priceless things we do too. All of us have little priceless things for the Christmas that we do, the little. Family get together, the traditions. So one of the traditions I seen a lot of people doing now, which I'm not doing, in case Stacy listening. Is putting on the same pajamas and all of we in a onesie and you know what I mean? And you take a picture for the grandma. I have a onesie and a big reindeer thing on my head. I I I'm not so sure about that one, right? I'm not so sure I could do that. But we have your own traditions, whether it's parang for us or your little Christmas breakfast that people is look forward to. Or St James have this boxing morning, is everybody's going to play football in St James. Like, I wonder if they still do that. But them things, I mean, the 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 the, and since when we drink all this eggnog, let me talk about this for a while, right? I didn't plan to talk about this, but let me talk about it. This idea of a white Christmas that we we, you know what I mean, we. One hundred, one hundred point one salute to them. It's about one hundred days of Christmas every year, right? I I love it. I don't really listen like now because I mean, this podcast done hard enough and when I listen to too much parang music and Soka parang and them thing, I want to done work for the year. I cannot get too deep into that, right? So I don't listen to one hundred till December really kicking. Now, I go in the cold next week, I might listen some of that hunting too to get myself in Christmas mode. But in the midst of the Christmas music, you know, you had to hear a little. I'm dreaming of a white woman, I mean, Christmas. And we 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 take these things a little far in Trinidad. So. I think that people who is wear onesie and thing for Christmas, I think they be wearing them onesie because it cold. It's nine degrees or zero degrees or whatsoever. They 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 cold. Christmas here, it'd be warm. It warm. So I don't know who, who start this tradition on the gram where we wearing. Everybody have matching onesie and his reindeer on the, on the chest and a and a and a reindeer. What is called that? Or a Santa hat? I think there's weather Santa hat because it cold. I don't know, it's not just the Santa hat, it knows the reindeer ears. What is called a bando? You have a bando with two reindeer ears coming out, you think reindeer's ears, where's that horn? Whatever it is. Like, we pick up these white people traditions or these foreign traditions wholesale. Don't, don't stop doing this if you is do this. You do your thing and enjoy your Christmas. But I just saying, again, somewhere with this story, right? The other day I went to Ashley's. And I went, uh, Mikasa, I go in courts, I go in all over the place, right? What I like to do is go by places like Mikasa. And they have very expensive things there that look very nice and high quality and all that. And then I go by courts and I look for something cheap that looking just like that, right? So I look, I go in my Mikasa for inspiration and I go my courts for savings, right? No advertisement here whatsoever. But while I looking for these thing, because I like every other Trinis, only Christmas time I just look to fix my house and buy thing that I need. But while I walking through Ashley's, I see a entertainment center. And in the entertainment center have a fireplace. Like, I I I I don't know how to describe this, it's like a little unit. That you could, like a fireplace, you could light a fire inside the unit, like a fire fire, like a real fire. Now, anybody who travel know always be when you go to them countries and they have a fireplace, when you come out from in the cold. Everybody buy the fireplace and you get a little warmed and them things, some of the houses built with a fireplace in it. But apparently you could buy a fireplace now, just like any appliance. And this is selling in Ashley's in the gonas. Ashley's in the gonas is selling fireplace. When I went by Mikasa, them have fireplace too. I just have a, I just want to know, for just for information sake. Who is buying these fireplaces in Trinidad? What, who is buying? Why is fireplace selling here? Is is is, we get so much materialistic, like which part cold so? Isn't that you turning on your air conditioner on low to get it place cold to put on a onesie to take a picture in front of fireplace, salute to you. Big up you, you have life figured out. If you buy a fireplace for your house, if you buy a fireplace for your house. And you had to play air conditioner on all just to get cooling up because I can't understand. I went out on a Sunday this weekend, the sun is scorching hot. So when you have this fireplace, where's the plan? It's just for how it look? It's for the gram? By you really that cold that you can't just turn on your air conditioner, open my window, whatever. White Christmas. This song is dedicated to everybody in Trinidad who going and run and buy all these fireplace.
I have never seen a white Christmas. Have you ever seen a white Christmas? I have never seen a white Christmas. Have you ever seen a white Christmas? I have never seen a white Christmas.
Such places I have never been. I couldn't tell a school that from a jingle bell.
All my Christmases were green.
So how can I dream of a white Christmas? Dream of something that I've never seen. I've never seen snow on any tree.
All my Christmases were green. All this fireplace and chimney door.
Yes.
Missile door and ding. Imagine walking in the winter wonderland and the big bright sun shining.
I have never seen a white Christmas.
Such places I have never been. I couldn't tell a stable.
All my Christmases were green. So how can we?
Dreaming of a white Christmas.
Have much more favorite home fire. Giant cross may be on your door.
Walking in the winter wonderland. 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 I have never seen a white Christmas.
Such places I have never been. I couldn't tell a school that from a jingle bell.
All my Christmases were green.
So how can I dream of a white Christmas? Dream of something that I've never seen. I've never seen snow on any tree.
All my Christmases were green. All this red rose there and Santa Claus.
Dressed up in his fur. Happy Christmas in the tropics, winter's time. This should never be so.
I have never seen a white Christmas.
I'm only hold a snow and sleep. The nearest I come to any snow.
It's when a ice cream on the street. I have never seen a white Christmas. Have you ever seen a white Christmas? I have never seen a white Christmas. Have you ever seen a white Christmas?
Stop buying fireplaces and stop making yourselves faces and you. Alright, so what you supposed to talk about, let me get serious in this episode here. Matter of fact. It doesn't serious to talk about, this is Christmas time, yes? Let me find song to play, this is a different kind of episode, you know? That song, by the way, is sung by a man, a guy by the name of Frankie Atwell alongside Archie Yifun. But the band you're hearing playing that sweet piece of music behind there is a fellow by the name of Joey Lewis. All you know him? The Joey Lewis Combo Band was the name at the time. His name, pal Joey Lewis and friends, yeah, it is Joey Lewis Combo Band. But when you're talking about Christmas, right? They have some songs that, with just the same way Yankees had a white Christmas and the jingle bells and the. Chestnuts roasting and so on. They have some songs that just make me feel like, like, like we real Christmas, you know what I mean?
Come in, where you see, where you gonna get?
That's right, that's right.
We are wrong, we are wrong.
Drink a rum and a punch of creamer, drink a rum. Drink a rum and a punch of creamer, drink a rum. Drink a rum and a punch of creamer, drink a rum. Drink a rum and a punch of creamer, drink a rum.
Muma, muma, would you like to join your son here? I am over here, happy in the mother country. Darling, for the Christmas, your son would be really jumping. Listen to the chorus of what we all will be singing.
Drink a rum and a punch of creamer, drink a rum.
It's Christmas morning.
Drink a rum and a punch of creamer, drink a rum.
Mama, drink if you drinking.
Drink a rum and a punch of creamer, drink a rum.
Let me feel the, we felt in.
Drink a rum and a punch of creamer, drink a rum.
Aka Muma, I have invited Jamaica, lovely Grenada. Pablo, also Diana. It's an invitation for a stupendous occasion. You can't just imagine, we drinking till New Year's morning.
Drink a rum and a punch of creamer.
A little drink a rum. It's Christmas morning.
Drink a rum and a punch of creamer, drink a rum.
Do do drink if you drinking.
Drink a rum and a punch of creamer, drink a rum.
Mama, singing, you singing.
Drink a rum and a punch of creamer, drink a rum.
The fastest grand, it's parts of all description. You must understand liquor to supply a nation. I have ordered whiskey, punch of cream and gin and brandy, lime and tonic water. Lemon, hard and angry, stir up.
Drink a rum and a punch of creamer, drink a rum.
It's Christmas morning.
Drink a rum and a punch of creamer, drink a rum.
Mama, drink if you drinking.
Drink a rum and a punch of creamer, drink a rum.
No time for shivering.
Drink a rum and a punch of creamer, drink a rum.
On Christmas Day, when Big Ben alarm six thirty, we are underway to begin this festivity. Later in the evening, we passing through Piccadilly, everybody dancing and singing the same melody.
Drink a rum and a punch of creamer, drink a rum.
Mama, drink if you drinking.
Drink a rum and a punch of creamer, drink a rum.
It's Christmas morning.
Drink a rum and a punch of creamer, drink a rum.
Let me drunk if we drunken.
Drink a rum and a punch of creamer, drink a rum.
Come and see how we jabbing.
I know I read so far, you know, because I was talking about compassion for the unvaccinated. At some point, I just get back on track with what I'm talking about, you know, let me give me some credit. So, yeah, as Christmas coming up and we in Christmas spirit, right? I see two things here I wanted to talk about, right? Because this Nisha guy thing it bother me. And when I see the post on him, I say, good God, look, look at what he was encouraging and now he had to be in an article. My guy Joel Julian played well, you know, he say a short story in four parts. The first part was her talking about she don't want no vaccine and she staying away from that and all that. And then the last part is the article I read last week where she say. She almost, she felt like she was going to die, she wasn't sure she was gonna make it, you see people die inside there and thing. But I want us, I want to make a appeal, give me this for the Christmas, right? Be compassionate about the people who unvaccinated. Because we going into our phase now where, as Archbishop say, ninety nine percent of the people who in ICU and who die, I mean, I hear, I hear. I had to get this woman name right, no, Miriam Richards, I hope, Doctor, Doctor Richard. I'll just say Doctor Richards from now on because I call new woman Maxine, any, any M name comes to my mind, Melanie. Doctor Richards, right? I hear more compassion in her voice or pain in her voice talking about this in the last press conference going on than ever before. Where she basically appealing to people saying the vaccine's safe, it proven as safe. You know what I mean? Don't, 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 don't follow the social media hype. Basically appealing to people to get vaccinated and speaking on behalf of, as well. Of all the people who are nurses, doctors, everybody, she went to talk about the senior doc, like how long they working for, how much they trying with people. Uh, who come in in hospital and 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 saying that they wish they had taken the vaccine and all that at that point and, okay. If you, I I hearing something like that, I think we should continue to encourage people to get vaccinated. But I don't want us to go down the road where we, where we lose compassion for all brothers and sisters because we feel that they make a choice. That wasn't in their best interest or in the best interest of the nation. Remember, people have issues and people might not have all the information and you never walk a mile in nobody's shoes. So it's hard to judge anybody else. But the reason I I remember this is because, uh, last week in the Express. You have a headline saying Stewart apologizes for jab against the unvaccinated. A nicely headline, right? I know I write the article, they didn't say who writes it, so is everybody in the express, right? But the article said that President of the Trinidad and Tobago Registered Nurses Association, I D, E D, I D I is the name, right? Stewart has issued an apology to the TTRNA membership for comments made during a telephone interview with the Express last week. In a letter to the association, Stewart said the comments had caused unnecessary discomfort. Stewart told the Express last week that he felt that, he felt a Covid nineteen patient who had been vaccinated should receive priority for ICU care. Over those who made the conscious decision not to get the vaccine, if a choice had to be made. His comments had come as a hel- as health officials issued frequent warnings of limited space. In the Covid nineteen ICUs. Stewart made it clear at the time that it was his personal opinion and not the view of the TTRNA. The TTRNA, however, later issued a state statement distancing itself from the comments, saying that the association does not support any form of discrimination in the provision of medical care. And urged its members to continue delivering quality, so quality care to all patients. Stewart has since apologized to the TTRNA membership and executive. This statement has caused unnecessary discomfort within the nursing and midwifery community at a time where we are under extensive strain. With yet another cycle of rising Covid nineteen cases. Went on to say, it is indeed naive of me not to realize how a statement, even though modified and generalized. Could have caused such national discussion and widespread debate. Salute to you for apologizing for that. I don't think it's a wise thing for you to say at all, especially given your position. But I generally don't feel it's a sentiment that we should continue with. All of us might have felt that way or said that, right? But I want to appeal to everybody to not. Let's not go down that road and start thinking that way. We, the medical fraternity already discriminates, right? Because when somebody shows up by uh ICU or what is called that, emergency. They have to treat the most urgent cases. I think it's the best distinction you could possibly make. Whoever is the most urgent cases in front of you are the people who should get cl- care. I do feel as if the doctors are telling us this over and over that they don't have the capacity to treat everybody. If they need to be hospitalized for severe cases of Covid or severe reactions. And in Trinidad, I don't think there's a case in Tobago at this point, but in Trinidad, we 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 very close to maximum. And people who go in not coming back out. You remember this story I read with Nisha guy last week, people who go in and not coming back out. But we still had to find a way to 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 realize that this is, this is still human beings. We can't make statements like, well, if you're unvaccinated. A a general sentiment you hear in a lot of people say, if you choose to get a vaccine and you don't trust science, don't go in the hospital when you get sick. Listen, I think we had a pack back, I think we had a ease of statements like that, remember, is real people dealing with, with real issues and so on. And I can understand why people feel that way. People seem to feel like the unvaccinated, people not doing their part. Uh, as a country for us to help get over this thing. And I, while I understand all that, I don't discount any of that. I just want us to remember that these are real people with real issues. Regardless of how much times the numbers push out at every day, and you just see ten and fifteen and five hundred and these numbers causes to get. Almost completely desensitized from the fact that these are real people. Except when it's like me and I I I find a new parang side because members dying. Or you see the Facebook post from everybody now and again, or the WhatsApp, um, the WhatsApp status update. That shows what would be a relatively young looking, healthy person who pass away. I remember a a a brother in St James, the name Quiet, old Fatima man and St James man, but it was only first people I knew and then it's like, wait, this thing for real? We had to keep remembering that whether people made the conscious choice like Stewart saying or not. These real people with real families and real children and real, Quieter than newborn, Quieter than newborn baby when he passed away from Covid. So I just don't want us to lose sight to the fact that this thing real because I saw another article from Singapore. And these countries different to Trinidad and thing, so I hope we don't plan to go down this road because. When you make statements like those or the fact that somebody unvaccinated shouldn't get medical care at all. We let we not forget that people paying tax and still doing the writing in this country, let we don't forget that. But Singapore, this is from the Washington Post. Headline says, people unvaccinated by choice in Singapore no longer can receive free Covid nineteen treatment. Said eighty five percent of the people in Singapore eligible for coronavirus vaccines are fully vaccinated. And eighteen percent have received booster shots. But the Singaporean government said Monday it will no longer cover the medical costs of people unvaccinated by choice. Who make up the bulk of the remaining new Corona vaccine cases and Covid nineteen hospitalizations in the city state. Now, they made a distinction here, they didn't just say unvaccinated, right? But unvaccinated by choice, which meant if you had a reason you couldn't take the vaccine, you wasn't on that list. It goes on to say currently, unvaccinated persons make up a sizable majority of those who require intensive inpatient, inpatient care. And disproportionately contribute to the strain on our healthcare resources. Uh, Covid nineteen patients who are unvaccinated by choice may still tap into regular healthcare financing arrangements to pay for their bills where applicable. Now, where you have a, I assume when I went Singapore said something like this, they have a mechanism by which you could pay in the public healthcare system. We don't have that. We don't have a mechanism by which you could charge some people in Port of Spain general. You ever see a cash register in Port of Spain general or in San Fernando general? It's not no cashier, everything free, you know what I mean? Medication free and all, we living so sweet here, you know what I mean? But. If you're saying that they can, in Trinidad, the version of this in Trinidad and Tobago, if you had to implement this would be, you cannot access the public healthcare system and you had to go private. Now, our private healthcare system, number one is prohibitively expensive. I don't know if they're set up to deal with Covid. I don't know if they're set up to deal with COVID nineteen like that, to have a separate part of the facility. I am not sure if the wealthy get COVID now, do they go west shore or do they end up right in ICU in, um, in Port of Spain? I'm not sure. But I, I, this is something that I, I don't support at all, I want us to be careful of this, because if you have a tendency that when you look at international news, you could make a guess as to what gonna happen in Trinidad i- i- in two, three months where COVID is concerned. I hope that nobody is considering things like what I, I'm glad that Stuart come, come out and apologize and we should apologize to ourselves for those kind of sentiments too. But I just want to put this out there so that we make sure that we don't go down that road. It not worth it, I don't think it's right. I think if you pay taxes all your life, a choice as to whether you take a vaccine or not should not now exempt you from the medical care that we work so hard over our lives to provide, not just for ourselves, but for generations that will come after. So that is just my little salvo for that, right? That is all I had to say about that. And I wanna get, I wanna kinda get back to playing Christmas music, you know, because I hope the, I hope the episode that I relate to, there's another related song that immediately make me feel like Christmas. But just listen to the message in the song too, right? So we could get back into that kind of Christmas mode where we love one another regardless.
A different breeze start to blow, you get goose pimples from head to toe. And then the music begin to play, leading up to Christmas Day. By now the spirit gripping you tight, it's parang and carols filling the night. And before you could wink, you yourself can't believe you're right into Christmas Eve. Christmas is yours, Christmas is mine, a feeling of joy, it's so divine. So let us all rejoice and let the voices sing, glory to the newborn king.
Yes?
Christmas we must remember, means the birth of our savior. It's too late then to make a start, to keep him in our heart. Because it's he who recommend peace and goodwill to all men.
Hear that?
So that we can share without any fear, greetings to unsincere. Christmas is yours, Christmas is mine, a feeling of joy, it's so divine. So let us all rejoice and let the voices sing, glory to the newborn king. Christmas is yours, Christmas is mine, a feeling of joy, it's so divine. So let us all rejoice and let the voices sing, glory to the newborn king. Christmas is yours.
Christmas is. A feeling of joy, yes, it's so divine, divine, divine. Listen, so here what, we, 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 I, I read something on Facebook, now I can't remember who said it. And I really wanted to give the person credit for saying it. I didn't come up with this and I don't know if you hear this before. But I think the topic was about the same thing with the vaccinated versus the unvaccinated and all this kind of thing, right? And the person said that if I had my way, I would have changed the watchwords from discipline tolerance and production to discipline appreciation and production. She says she would have changed the word appreciation. She says she would have changed the word tolerance to appreciation. I kinda like the idea. I never sign a petition yet, but who could make petition? Who good at these kind of things? Is that anybody who listening who just do petition and so, they got plenty people to sign and thing? Let we in we lifetime, change the word tolerance to appreciation now. I think it will make a big difference in terms of what, because tolerance almost sound like if it burdens someone, he had to go through it, but sometimes appreciation of a different outlook. Like, don't just seek to tolerate, seek to understand and empathize and all these nice words too. So I can't remember who said that, that is not my words, but I all for changing the thing to discipline appreciation and reproduction. I didn't talk to Jason Gordon, I feel Jason Gordon is the man to talk about this, because if he was to hear, um, tolerance, uh appreciation over tolerance, I feel he go like that, I feel I had to find a way to go onto him and see if he willing to, to walk that journey with me. Nobody ain't gonna take me on when I say it, but if a man like him say it, we onto something. On the topic of tolerance and appreciation, right? I see something going wrong on WhatsApp and I know all they might have seen this too. But I was eager to hear what the premise was saying, because I know it have vaccines and it have safe zones. And I myself eaten a couple restaurants since the, 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 um, the restrictions lift and it has safe zones, I walk my vaccine card, we went by some restaurants, we eat, it has some restaurant, I ain't going back by, you know, call name? I ain't, call name boy? And, and, and when they know mad like them bad, I suppose it's because when you go stumbling and, 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 another, what you so call the next place by Rusty there again, boy? Paprika, when you hit the paprika, then they stumbling and you stumble out of stumbling, you could have go place like Blue Star Diner and eat after. But I realized like it's only a place to, to go when you're very drunk. I using my vaccine card and I going places, so we good. But I see a little WhatsApp going around, a place named Residence. Now Residence has been in the, in the news and in the stories since COVID started. Because if you remember, many, many times we see people running out Residence back door and we talk about it on this podcast too, to run down in the basement to get a car because police raid. Now, I just, just keep in mind that Residence is a club or a bar in One Woodbrook Place, allegedly owned by friends of big wig such as Faris and Rowi and so on, and Gary Griffith and so on, right? So this place, One Woodbrook Place, I want you to picture in your mind where One Woodbrook Place is. If, if you're foreign a long time and thing, picture Roxy, you know where Roxy is? That where Residence is, right? You know Harvard's? Residence also opposite Harvard's, if you, if you from a long time, I cap a drugs, that were Residence's, right? On St. James Main roadside. You know what else is right there? A place called, what me and you might know as the barracks. But the young people listening might know it as the police train in college or whatever the hell it is called, you know? Imagine them men leave the barracks, them could have walked across the road by Residence and stop a party. But they raid and everybody run all the back door and get away, that was the first story come up about Residence, right? After that, we come and see Private Ryan get arrested for having a, 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 a private, well, they don't call it zess when it's those ilk of people, you know what I mean? Those ilk of people has have get togethers, has have soirees, them don't know zess, right? And you see Private Ryan, you see the, the picture, he balled from behind, he fancy shoot. Everybody made to sit on their hands inside Residence and I don't know what became of that, because that story fade to black real fast. You don't know how much people get charged, how much people, what went on. But this week, I see videos going on on WhatsApp again, like they coming from Residence. And it's not a full-on party, it is a party, nobody's running from nobody, everybody fetting and nah, go to jail again, oh no, it's a full fat going on. I say, but what going on here? And then Stacy quickly remind me that Residence might be a safe zone now. If this is true. And the people who was there present vaccine cards, is this acceptable, right? Because number one, I notice SOE supposed to finish this week, right? At the end of the SOE, you seeing some freedom. But that video didn't happen after the SOE finished, that happened during the SOE, so a state of emergency have gathering laws about how much people could gather. And then the doc come out himself and say that he's still restricting the amount of people for gatherings and them thing, I think ten is the number he say. So and I know I see more than ten people in that video, if that come from Residence and if that was recent. So I wonder if Doc have WhatsApp, only think the Doc have WhatsApp? I ain't sure, you know, I ain't sure if he have WhatsApp or in your WhatsApp group, only add him to a couple WhatsApp group now, because like he not seeing it, or McDonald Jacob, they have WhatsApp? Anybody seeing what is happening? Because it's a no way that the cases could be rising as high as they rising. And the people, like Dr. Miriam Richards on, on the TV making appeal almost to tales for unvaccinated people who in, um, who were there and in ICU and so on. And in the midst of that, soiree is allowed to happen in certain venues and people just cool with it. Everybody dress up nice and go into the soiree, that, that couldn't possibly be the case, you know what I mean? So the, we, now that we know the SOE coming and finish Wednesday, he said that there is only ten people in a gathering, I, I, I believe that when he said that, he meant beyond the ending of the SOE. And uh it would be interesting to see if during this Christmas, we, we allowed to go in a vaccinated room with a hundred people, because all of us vaccinated and we cool and are fat, because Chris, we long time in a Christmas party, you know, remember companies use a little Christmas party and everybody who playing thing during the year, come in and take a little wine after they drink their wine. I wonder if that is what is happening and I, I, I'm worried, because this is not the time to do that during a, a spike in cases as high as it is, along with a variant to this thing that, that's spreading faster. And that means to add to that, and Sam Gibbs, this is from his Twitter, PM says, public parties and fet and all their forms remain prohibited, this would have been what he says Saturday, so this is confirmation. PM said on Wednesday, the parliament will meet and will discontinue this state of emergency. So public parties and fet, does that mean private parties and fet's going on? No, 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 private party myself, what they, you know, they're safe, you know what I mean? It's vaccinated and so on, you know what I mean? A little soiree, it was a soiree, it was not a zess, you know what I mean? Alright, well, I mean, I, listen, I here to play song, you know, every, every, any issue I talk about between now and the end of the year is purely incidental, what we here to is play some song and enjoy the Christmas. Another classic that is make you feel right in the Christmas mode.
Christmas morning, I helping the wife to put up protein. The big boy clock started crying, I said, yeah, somebody coming. Was Roy, Aprostas and Scotty, classic Nancy and Jenny, leave town and come to go party. Popping drinks and singing the good flavor. Wake up is Christmas morning. It's puncher cream we drinking. Get up, get up from your bed. And slice up some cake and sweet bread. With something sweet, something sweet, something sweet to pass in the night. Into my house them nimers walk, I gave them salted garlic pork. With ramescotch and puncher cream, sorrel ginger beer. I gave them salted business to eat, with salt nuts and good salt beat. I even gave them a salt moon, yet they kept singing that shit. They're all. Wake up is Christmas morning. It's puncher cream we drinking. Get up, get up from your bed. Slice up some cake and sweet bread. With something sweet, something sweet, something sweet to pass in the night. Something sweet, something sweet, something sweet to pass in the night. I had to call on me neighbors to help me cool them nimers. Rupert, Gomez, Carlos, Samuel, Bridges, Lando and Maxwell. The neighbors cook up salt baby, with salt fish pasta and chili. And yet them nimers still find fault and they give something salty and say. Wake up is Christmas morning. Puncher cream we drinking. Get up, get up from your bed. Free zone like cake and sweet bread. Without something sweet, something sweet, something sweet to pass in the night. Something sweet, something sweet, something sweet to pass in the night. We want something sweet, something sweet, something sweet to pass in the night. Something sweet, something sweet.
Something sweet, alright, like something sweet going on there? You know, that was another song I hear my father and I'm singing for prang. Prang and then coming home a long time. And I never know that was a real song, a lot of them songs them was playing, I told them make up them song, something sweet and drink a rum and a puncher cream, I told my father to make them song. Alright, we going on to foreign news now. Just as we say, the pandemic, we, we enter no more lockdowns, we coming out to the backside of this pandemic, right? Where we not gonna see any more lockdowns and border closures and that type of restriction and we had to learn, as, as Archbishop wisely said, to live with the virus and survive the virus, you know what I mean? While more, more calls come for vaccines and booster shots of our second first doses or additional first dose is what I say, right? And medication getting approved, so even people who get it and get bad, they might be able to take it just like cold medication, looking like we on the way out. Flashback to when we now start the lockdown. Remember that your home was not like the way it is now, like for me. The room I do in this podcast and now is my home office where I has work from every day. This room was just packed up with stuff before. I had to convert this and make it into a space where I could work from home comfortably. And you know Stacy could get to do her thing, although she not allowed in here very much. And Zachary could do his thing, although he's just barging his way in and decided to do it his own space. We had to do something for Zachary in his room to allow him to be able to do his school every day without, without the disturbances of narco shooting up the place, like when I wanna watch TV any day. And I had to buy some, I said something I ain't use, like yoga mat, resistance band, dumbbell, pull-up bar. Weeks, we, we, we start to cook more often, the grocery bill went up, the buying food bill went down. You know, we make a lot of adjustments over the last, what, what, two years, having to adjust to COVID. And also, in terms of how we entertain ourselves, unfortunately, we get a lot more onto the Netflix and the Instagram lives and people like Fat Joe, think of him doing his Joe Pro Show and doing interviews and stuff. All them things come out of the pandemic really, he would have never done that if, we probably don't have the time to do that when the world open back up and go all the time. So we get a good bit of entertainment, we had, we used to watch Major Hype do song Clash and do little interviews and them things during the, during the week, two, three times a week. And that was a little entertainment when the pandemic start. But wait to flashback to when the pandemic had just start and we locked down in Trinidad for the first time. The thing that really rally we through was a series by the name of Tiger King. You remember the Tiger King, Joe exotic? The Tiger King is back, the thing coming out in Netflix on Wednesday, by the time you're listening to this, you're probably back into the new episode of Tiger King. And like their interviews, because Joe exotic lock up. But the man who had take over the Tiger Farm, what is called that farm or ranch? A zoo? The fellow who was his business partner, you remember, he like, he take over the thing and is, is, is our money issue now, because the man say they have more money than God, you think? And Carol Baskin, apparently they investigating how serious for the husband disappear and something, so it's like Tiger King bring us into COVID and it taking us out of COVID. So it's like Tiger King bring us into Covid and it taking us out of Covid. It couldn't be better time, it couldn't be better time. So I have plenty thing to do this week, but I, I know for sure that one of the things I gonna be doing is saying that and taking in the Tiger King. I looking forward to that. And another documentary that had started taking in close to when the pandemic really had us locked down was Jordan Last Dance. It was about his sixth ring when he make the comeback and Israeli his final season in the NBA and stuff and I was just really re-watching that the other day because coincidentally Scottie Pippen. Scottie Pippen has some Will Smith in him, you know, just play now before I get to it, right? You see Will Smith has something in him, I get any book in the book, hey, the book fancy, you know? The book fancy. I see Charlamagne and I see Snoop on them, like he send the book to them and there's a whole box um, with a key and it open up and it say purpose unfair and I will probably see that on Instagram, you know, because when he sent out the book to celebrities as a part of his promotion, I suppose, he, I mean, the man make his presentation on point, it's a whole big box and you had to see it for yourself, right? So Scottie Pippen, wife, this good Jada M too, you know, just like her. But the only difference is that Will and Jada stayed together, but Scottie Pippen wife leave him. They done, right? But he still get good Jada, because she was a future. She, she are wrong, she are wrong, you know what I mean? She, 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 she's for the streets. But Scotty is having some issues. I don't understand what happened with Scotty. Scotty, in the, in the documentary, right, which Scotty seemed very happy doing, he sit down and talk about it, he laugh, he talk us through Jordan flu game when Jordan leave, that a time he refused to go on the court for the last play of the game because he was giving Kukoc the ball. He talk us through everything, his own signing a bad contract so that he, he gets short money. And he said with his own mouth that I signed the contract because I had people to mine and people to take care of and I couldn't refuse that money and I needed the upfront money. And I remember him saying that um Jerry Reindorf or whoever is the head of the bull, the owner and Phil Jackson kinda telling him like, hey, you don't wanna lock yourself into this long contract, that's a bad idea. But he said, nah, I want my money. When I see that kind of contract and that kind of time, I have plenty people to take out the hood, which I currently fault somebody for. But Scotty seem to think that everything is everybody else fault except his own. I don't understand what going on with Scottie Pippen. All of a sudden it coming out that he does not like Jordan at all. He find Jordan selfish and Jordan and one of the things he's saying is that for the, for the Last Dance documentary, he didn't get pay and they make the thing about Jordan and it was I'm like, and Jordan get ten million for the documentary and he get none, it's like Scotty, you still learn to negotiate. You didn't get agent. Why you went and do it for free? No, you had no guns, you had to do anything like, what, what going on with you? He just gone into heavy complaint mode. And I don't understand it, but from what, what we're hearing now, Scotty have a book that's coming out to talk about things. So I go and buy Scotty book too. Will Smith and Scotty book gonna be the two things that I read going into the end of the year here, because let me hear what Scotty had to say. We, I, I understand where he coming from with the contracting and that is, you know, they say, you remember, one of the things we learned during the coup was that you can't sign a contract under duress, right? I think that law had to apply to poor black children in the states who sign uh as rappers or, well, as musicians or athletes. Because I going back to Copper, um Kaepernick documentary for a while, are we talking all documentaries before we get to here? Colin Kaepernick documentary, now I still stand by what I said the other day, the documentary was lame, it was not well done, it was very, it was, oh god, but it was real victimhood. Uh, I see somebody describe it online as being just petty victimhood. Really, you taking me, you minimizing what racism really is and, and, and systematic racism by picking on minor issues. But what I will say is that he raised some real major issues because I have been saying for a long time, I've seen a lot of white folks disagreeing with this online. But I compare professional football or professional sports like football, uh NFL football, our football, baseball, basketball. I compare those things to slavery all the time and he made that comparison and the white folks was real upset with him. Saying you can't compare yourself to slavery. That's true to extent. I mean, you cannot compare somebody who getting paid tens of millions of dollars and you know, they have these little ways, they say things that I feel take jobs at us as a racer. When they say all you're doing is bonking a ball. Don't, don't say that. Because if that was the case, then all of we would have be doing that and all of us would have make the professional level of whatever we wanted to do as little boys. But all of us care do it because what they do is extremely hard and it takes a lot of talent and even more hard work to reach the levels that Colin Kaepernick reached. There's no doubt about that. The, the work that these people put in, they are amazing. Because when white people talk about Tom Brady, they don't say he just throwing a ball, they say he's the greatest of all time, most dedicated, top athlete in any sport, understand that and the other. When they talking about Phil Mickelson, Mickelson or um, what the white boy name? Arnold Palmer and these fellows. They talk about them as elite athletes on the top of the class and classy and they work so hard, but when is we, we just bonking a ball, right? So I don't wanna minimize what the experience of being enslaved was and how cruel it was. And just by, by, by just simply comparing it to the NBA and the NFL. But when I make that parallel, what I mean is the ownership part. And it's happening in music as well. And when, when you see somebody like Prince who die with a tattoo of slave on his face. Those things very, very meaningful because Prince would have been one of our greatest athle- uh musicians. In terms of ability, dedication, success from the standpoint of sales or whatever you wanna call it, Prince was one of the greatest to ever do what he does. Dave Chappelle, one of the greatest to ever do what he does. You could, you could, you could run through the names. But you find that the people who reach the top spot for us still end up disgruntled. So it's not that they didn't make a lot of money or they didn't get the access or the recognition. But what I realize is that you don't have your freedom. So the difference is that we not getting whips and chains and all those types of things and granted, yes. And again, millions of dollars where we would have had ancestors who never get pay at all, right? But the fact that you don't have your ownership, think of this, right? How much would you give for your freedom to be completely free? You don't owe nobody, you don't, nobody can tell you where to go, nobody can tell you what to do. You might give back all the money and all the fame and all those things just so that you have freedom, freedom or choice and and this, when, when it's on more white privileges, a big part of what people talking about, they're saying that people, they born free. Some of them born with generational wealth, they don't have anything and while we, we, we get skip some generations because a lot of our wealth gets stolen from us and we get stolen from ourselves in a lot of ways. So now when you see an athlete there and he sign a hundred million dollar deal. But you don't have the choice to say, I don't wanna play in Miami no more, I wanna play in LA, I don't wanna play. Or like Dave Chappelle, he don't want to play at all anymore. Everything you have will be taken away from you. Is that dangerous thing, you know? So I, 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 I hear Kaepernick on that and I understand why people feel it's an unfair comparison, but I find the comparison spot on. Because I playing for a team. I remember how I used to feel and this is why I always jab at Manchester United. It's not that I hate Man U, right? But I really didn't like the way Man U treat Dwight York. And the thing is this, I, uh, in my simple mind, I must be seventeen, eighteen years old when York playing for Manchester United. He's the greatest thing I ever see and his strike partner was also black and they dominate to the point where they win a treble. It's hard for any team in the world to win a treble. Few teams could say that they did, right? And he was your greatest striker. And there was a point in time where York kinda cross him. You know what I mean? And York, I ain't saying York can bring some things on himself because York is a man, they say he like to party at one point. Ferguson tell him he had to get married. He partying. I remember seeing York down here on Fatima Grungs for a soccer picnic. After they had a national game, this, whoever day it was, the Sunday morning, New York here and I thinking, but you don't wanna go back. It's like Manchester United, how game midweek or whatever it is, you, you, you chilling. So what Ferguson do is not trade him. And it was something that he used to do, I ain't saying he wouldn't do it to York, he used to do it to a lot of people. When you cross him or you come against him, what you do is bench you. And don't give you no playing time or really get it as a smaller team or you get to play in the um, in the knockouts and thing, you don't get to play in the prem. And I, I, I never like that. That make me dislike that team a lot and dislike Ferguson a lot because okay, if you're against a man and he not playing for you well and he, 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 he not obeying what you say as, as the manager of the team. Trade him. Give him the freedom to go and ply his trade and make his money elsewhere. But I find like what Ferguson used to try to do is devalue you. So you getting your money and thing and the thing, but I put you on the bench and I hide in you. So what I doing is destroying your future. I never like that and I, from that day, from that time, I don't like Manchester United at all for that and I remember on Bernie and Barry podcast, Fuzi Mohammed talking about this and talking about Liverpool, like we were people back in Liverpool and celebrating them and now a Muslim Egyptian guy is only big striker and making all the uh, making you all famous again and putting you all back at the top where, where, where you were back in the day. And Fuzi say he grew up a Liverpool fan because of his father, but he say he stopped supporting it because of how Liverpool fans used to treat their black players. Now all of a sudden you celebrating a Egyptian Muslim, a little like Muslim and a little like black people and them things. So the, uh, these are the things where going back to Kaepernick and, and this whole thing. It kinda draws a parallel that I feel real uncomfortable with. When they talk about the way they own players and they could trade here from one team to the next. And he hears so much basketballers in particular, talk about the fact that they find out they get traded through the media. They have several interviews on YouTube, you could go and watch now where a player told he transferred and he's like, yeah, really? He didn't even know. So now you had to pick up and go with your family because now you have a new owner. Something about that system not right. You get where I come in from and the same thing is happening, rap and thing where you have to buy back your masters and buy back the ownership of songs that you write and so on. Especially coming out of our field where uh, people like Chuck Berry and them will tell you that Elvis, Elvis singing what them singing. A lot of times the people, our scouts or our talents or somebody who call itself a writer, come to black clubs all over the, the south. Hear songs that go back and presented to Elvis as songs that they write and he singing it and he, all of a sudden he's the king of, king of pop, they used to call him, king of rock or whatever. And then Nashville, Tennessee is the home of this and all of a sudden rock, rock music is for white people. But anyway, I don't know how rich quiet in, I really come here to play Christmas music, you know? Anyway, I don't know how rich quiet in, I really come here to play Christmas music, but salute to Scottie Pippen. You can't understand how you're feeling on these things, but Scotty, two years down the road, you had to be, you had to, you had to get yourself together. Better you go to Michael and get some advice on how to work through these things and make sure that your money right, don't have nobody using you. Use Scottie Pippen, you know what I mean? Don't, 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 don't make a fight with Jordan. Make sure that you have your, your, your ducks in a row because if Jordan was getting ten million for that documentary, you should have called for aid. Or tell them they cannot use your likeness. I don't even know if you could do that, but tell them they can't use nothing from you, don't mention your name and thing in the documentary. People, people wanna hear from Scottie Pippen, so I gonna get Scotty book and I gonna see what is about and thing and also get some advice from Will Smith as to how to deal with this whole situation with um, future girl, I mean your ex-wife and so on, right? Alright, yeah, I really, I really here, I really here for the music sake, you know what I mean? So when I remember my partner Zachary. And now he know Christmas and it's a no Father Christmas, you know, they used to say Father Christmas. It's a no Santa Claus and thing coming, some getting milk and cookies, your mother eating them thing and your mother money spending. I hope he know, only know that now. I hope he tell your children that too. This is a good year to lay your children know, that's a no Santa Claus. And save yourself one of them gift that is by early time. So I want to leave you with this song. Now this is a artist, a calypsoonian that is one of my favorite calypsonians, one of the funniest calypsonians all time, one of the best songwriters we ever had. And just to show you how long ago Christmas music come out in Kaiso. I don't know why I don't play him more. I, I need to make that a point to do, but this is the mighty spoiler. And just like how Zachary learn about Santa Claus, here how spoiler learn about Santa Claus.
The secret part of Christmas good for me, people are police like Jack Valance.
Listen, stay safe, enjoy yourself, but don't go too far. Remember that it's heavy numbers. Everybody take care yourself. I will see you all next week.